Good morning, welcome to Hardin County Commissioners' Court. Today is Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty. It is ten a.m. All members of the Court are present, and this meeting is called to order. If everyone will please rise in the invitation by Commissioner Pelt, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
My dear and father, we thank you for many blessings that you give us each day. Pray that you be with us as we conduct the business of the county, give us wisdom and guidance to do what is good for the people. Pray that you be with our nation, being President Trump, as he attempts to lead our nation, forgive us of our sins. We ask in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number three, approved minutes of the February sixth, two thousand and twenty special meeting, and February eleventh, two thousand and twenty regular meeting, as presented by Glenn Austin, County Clerk. Second. That motion by Commissioner Roberts, and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, consider approval of request to cancel all registered claims from February eleventh, two thousand and twenty meeting, and approval of cash statement as presented by Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer. Good morning, Ms. McWilliams.
Good morning. I'm asking the Court to release a meeting of the liability of one million, two hundred fifteen thousand, fifteen dollars and thirty-six cents. On our cash report and general checking account, we have fifteen million, four hundred thirty thousand, eight hundred thirty-six dollars and twenty-two cents. In tax pool, we have four million, one hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred thirty dollars and ninety-four cents. Our total cash funds of nineteen million, six hundred twenty-eight thousand, three hundred sixty-seven dollars and sixteen cents.
We've got three that's presented.
Second. That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. McWilliams. Item number five, authorization to pay county bills as presented by Angela Gore, County Auditor. Ms. Gore, good morning.
Good morning. The pre-approved expenditures for February the twelfth are twenty-three thousand, one dollar and six and seven cents. The pre-approved expenditures for February the thirteenth are four hundred seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twelve cents. The pre-approved expenditures for February the nineteenth were fifteen thousand, seven hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents. And expenditures for Commissioners' Court today are three hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents, with a total expenditures and transfers of eight hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. The gross payroll for February the twenty-seventh is five hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and one cent. And the total transfer for that payroll is eight hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and four cents.
Motion for deals.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Pelt, and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Gore. Item number six, permission to loan funds from account number zero one zero four oh one eight hundred contingency general to grant fund four thirty-seven HMGP dash DR dash four three three two dash zero five two, property acquisitions, in the amount of forty-one thousand, eighty-seven dollars and zero cents. And if approved, consider approval to pay an outstanding invoice to MPTX Associates in the amount of forty-one thousand, eighty-seven dollars and no cents.
Move. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Pelt, and a second by Commissioner Roberts. The copy of this invoice is in here. This is all for pre-award cost on this project, and it does have to be paid before we start going any funds down on that project. And you'll see that later on in here is a line item to approve signing that award letter, which will begin that grant project. Any other discussion?
Judge, would these be reimbursed?
Yes. We'll be able to ask for reimbursement once that grant gets going, and we, that'll be the first thing we do, is request that reimbursement. And in fact, we're also going to request that they advance us some funds on that project. I'm not sure if that would get approved, but we're hoping so. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, consider approval of a fiscal year twenty budget transfer request by Commissioner Pelt as follows. We'll be moving eleven thousand and seven dollars from materials and supplies over to salaries temporary, along with the fringes that are listed here, which are FICA taxes, workers' comp insurance, and state unemployment tax.
Motion for. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight, consider and possibly approve the following fiscal year twenty budget amendment. Create a new line item in the Roden Bridge Fund, zero one seven six two one three three eight, supplies donated funds, and transfer four hundred sixty dollars and four cents from the Roden Bridge surplus fund balance to this newly created line item, which is zero one seven six two one three three eight.
So moved. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Pelt, and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. This is to move donated funds that were donated to Commissioner Precinct One last year that were not spent, and moves them over into this budget. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine, consider and possibly approve the following fiscal year twenty budget amendment. Create a new line item in the General Fund, zero one zero five six zero three nine four, donated funds equipment, and transfer two hundred fifty dollars and twenty cents from the General Surplus Fund Balance to this newly created line item, zero one zero five six zero three nine four. And this is the same type of transfer donating, transferring donated money that was not spent in the fiscal year nineteen budget in the Sheriff's Office.
So moved. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Roberts, and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cooper.
Uh, Ms. Gore, I guess this would apply to both my donated funds, as well as the Sheriff's or anybody else's, for that matter. So, my understanding is, this was donated in last year's budget, but it wasn't used. So, the carryover was put into our general carryover, is that correct?
That, if you don't spend it, then it goes, it rolls into your contingency, the, the General Fund contingency, the Roden Bridge contingency. And so therefore, the entry has to be made, it has to be pulled out of that contingency to be put back into that line item. Is that your question?
Yes, ma'am. I think that's kind of, as far as a, an accountant standpoint, that makes sense, but it's kind of complicated because we were advised that we had to create a line item for donated funds. And I assume, looking at it through the big picture, anything that's left over, regardless of what line item this is, is automatically going into. I, I don't think it should be mixed up, but I understand where you're coming from. That was my question, thank you.
At the end of the year, it automatically rolls into a contingency, and then it has to be created, because once we, when we adopted the budget, this line item was not in the budget.
So it'd be a good idea to use that amount in the year it was donated?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number ten, presentation of Hardin County Historical Commission annual report for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. This will be presented by Mr. J.A. McKinn the third, the Chairman of the Historical Commission. Morning, Mr. McKinn.
Good morning. I'm not here to ask for anything, I'm gonna give y'all something. Would you pass that down to the judge?
Thank you, sir.
In fact, I want to come here and thank you, this Commissioners' Court, for all you do to help the citizens of our county. People have no idea how hard you work. And that goes for other county officials. I see other county officials in this room. They all need to be commended for the work they do.
Thank you very much, Mr. McKinn.
And part of that work y'all do is helping the Hardin County Historical Commission do its work for the citizens. So, you guys do a lot, and I just want to thank you for it. I won't take much of your time, I see how long of an agenda you have. Of course, the Historical Commission, our function is to foster a culture of preservation. We believe that if we preserve history from yesterday, we will inform today, and we will inspire tomorrow. Current and future generations need to be educated about the courage of our pioneers, and the perseverance of our predecessors who built this county, and the people like you that continue to run it and do it excellently. I'm gonna give you just a real quick summary of what that report says. We file each one each year with the Texas Historical Commission, and they've gotten really like us to make a formal presentation about it, let you guys know we do something. Well, you guys know we do something, because we have a lot closer interaction than, say, large counties.
We do, we appreciate that.
During the year, there were thirteen hundred hours donated by members of the Hardin County Historical Commission to various projects, in particular, to find museums we have. The, uh, the museum of Hardin County here in Coons, and the Horn Row Museum over in Sour Lake, both fine museums. Over thirteen hundred hours for our small group. I think that's commendable, and I'm proud of all of them that did it. There were, there were no historical markers dedicated for two thousand and nineteen, but there are inquiries for possibly two this year. I'm not sure, it's kind of had to see how the year unfolds, but there may be two this year. We held our annual awards program each year, which we've done for about twenty-five years, where we recognize citizens and organizations that have done things that are noteworthy in historic preservation. And, uh, if you want to read any more greater details, you're welcome to read that probably boring little report I gave you there. But, uh, I'll just wrap my little presentation up by thanking you again, and we look for two thousand and twenty to be a good year for us as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. McKinn. Does anybody have any comment?
I would like to say, uh, thank you, you thought, you thanked us, or we want to thank you. I know Mr. Pelt and Chris are on, on the, uh, commission. I think it's a great idea, and I know y'all probably already do it, but recruit some younger people, because you ain't gonna be here forever.
You are so right, though.
No, really, and I appreciate the work that you have done, but we need some younger people.
We talk about it all the time. If we could hook it up to a phone app, I guess we could. But, yeah, you're very right, that is something, and it can knows it especially, we talk about this a lot. Any ideas, please forward them to me.
We will.
Anyone else have a question? Yes, sir.
No, I, I want to make a comment when you get through.
Okay, I'll, well, I'm through, gentlemen, unless y'all have any other questions, and I'm, you know where I am, if you do have a question later, if you need me.
Thank you.
First, first, I'd like to say I appreciate Commissioner Cooper's comment, and he looks a little bit younger than me, and I'm going off, so did he volunteer?
I think that's why. That's the way I took it.
Chris, you did.
Chris is already on there, so, but what I would like to say in all seriousness is, I have worked with Jimmy for now about twenty-five years, and under his leadership and his energy, I believe every historic cemetery has been identified and a historical marker put on it in Hardin County, and that is a great achievement. And, uh, I hope Jimmy stays for many, many years. He's pretty young, and, uh, but he's done a great job. He's put in many hours, and people have no ideas how much Jimmy's put on it. And Jimmy, we thank you very much for it.
Thank you.
I'm overrated, dog.
Don't ever say that, ask for a raise.
Yeah, you could double my salary and still be zero.
Well, we gave you the opportunity. Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm excused, I will head out.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Item number eleven, presentation of departmental report from the Texas A&amp;M Hardin County AgriLife Extension Office, which will be provided by Ms. Katie Pace, the Extension Agent. Good morning, Ms. Pace.
Good morning, and I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice.
Well, that's okay.
You get your Commissioners' Court reports each month, so I'm not gonna go through and read that completely to you. But I did kind of want to talk to you a little bit about what we have going on, and what we have coming up. Um, January, we started our agricultural newsletter, and we've been sending it out to pretty much anybody that we know that's involved in agriculture in the county. We've also posted on our Facebook page, and we've actually been getting a lot of people that are interested in it, so it's going good so far. We've gotten a lot of good feedback, and we've started adding some stuff to it, so hopefully that continues to be good. Something I'm really excited about is our Clover Kids program, which is the program for our younger kids who are not four age, age yet. They actually just got a decree from Representative White for their community service efforts, so I'm, I'm really excited about that. And they each got a decree that he mailed to them, and he signed, so really fun. For, we're fully in stock show season, I would say we're at the beginning of it, but we're fully into it. We had a Angus Heifer that actually went to Fort Worth and got sixth place. So, uh, we had a reserve champion breed rabbit there too, so our kids are actually really putting stuff on the map. San Antonio, we just had a pig place fourth in class in sale on Friday, so I'm super excited about that. That was an awesome experience for them. Our first program was last Thursday, and it was introduction to beekeeping, and, you know, we're, we're getting there, we're getting numbers out there, so I'm happy. I really didn't think anybody would show up, so I'm really excited about that.
I bet Judge Thomas was there.
He was. He was there with Bill, so, and he said, I, I know it's introductory, he said, but I'm excited. He said, I always learn something new. So, it, it was actually a lot of fun, because he had a lot of information too. And we used what we had from our previous program plan meetings with the committees, because we're still trying to figure out people to establish those committees again with, and people who actually are gonna be invested and want to give us their time, because I know it's a lot to ask, we don't have a lot of stability. And, um, we've gotten a lot of calls and stuff from Lumberton, and we're seeing more people who are moving out here that need a little bit of help, that don't really know where to start. And we're creating the Backyard Basic Series, which is, we're going from ground up, if you want to do it in your backyard, we're gonna have a program on it. And this Thursday will be backyard chickens, we're gonna do backyard earthworms, gardening from the ground up, and we've got a couple specialists coming in, so I'm excited about those. The last thing, this Friday and Saturday, I attended Hunt Master Training, which is with the Texas Wildlife Association. What it does is, it gives us the opportunity to create youth hunts for kids and take them to areas of the state that they've never been. We're gonna hold a youth hunt training, or Hunt Master Training here in, um, March on the twentieth and twenty-first. So hopefully, we're gonna get a couple volunteers that are gonna be interested enough to go with us, because it's a really neat opportunity to take kids that they're probably never gonna go out to West Texas again in their life. And, um, I've done it for several years with inner-city Houston kids, and I'm really excited to do it here. So, that's all I have, I don't want to take up too much time. If y'all have any questions or need anything, please, just let me know.
That last program you talked about is taking kids hunting?
Yes, sir.
Is that what that is?
Yes, sir.
Good deal.
Um, it is, they're partnered, it's the Texas Wildlife Association partnered with Texas Parks and Wildlife. It's the Texas Youth Hunting Program.
Great.
And it, it's really fun. I love it every time we go.
Well, I'd recommend Aaron helping you with that, but I don't think he killed a deer last year. Might not be good.
It's more about the experience. If they harvest, that's great, if not, at least they got to go somewhere that they're probably never gonna go again.
Absolutely, I think that's great. Any, uh, comments or questions for Katie?
I have a comment.
Mr. Pelt?
Since you've come, the feedback I get from four-age adult leaders is very, very positive. And that is a very, as we discussed, you know, when the judge and I met with you, and whatever the man's name was that brought you down, that's a very important part of the county agents' duties in Hardin County. And you have done a great job, from what I've been told. The other thing is, uh, when we start talking about bees, a lot of people don't realize, bees are in crisis right now in the United States. And a lot of people don't, you know, don't think anything about honeybees, except maybe you only get some honey from them, but pollinating crops has become very critical in the United States. Fruit, vegetables, pastures, things that people depend on, without bees, we'd be in bad shape. And so, A&amp;M, and Purdue, and a lot of the land-grant universities are writing papers how critical it is with a bee situation here. So, I'm glad to see our district judge involved in them, and, uh, glad to see that.
Well, and a lot of people don't know that Mr. Moore, which lives down three twenty-six, he actually is the number one producer in the state right now.
Yeah, Chris Moore.
So, um.
In the state, wow.
Yeah.
Last, last time I checked, he was. So, and I mean, his bees are right, and they're in California right now pollinating almond trees.
Yeah, bees, bees from Hardin County go to the New England states, to California. This is how critical it is when you have to haul bees in Texas to pollinate their crops. And in fact, some of these bee people make more money off pollination than they do off honey. And Chris is a very fine man.
Yes, he is.
So thank y'all for all you good work.
Katie, thank you for your presentation, and I just want to remind all department heads that the Court welcomes you anytime that you want to provide a departmental report in your department. Feel free to let us know, and we'll put you on the agenda. Item number twelve, authorization for county judge to sign agreement between Hardin County and Regional Emergency and Hospital Preparedness Council, RHPC, for coordination of healthcare services during periods of natural and med-made disasters and other public health emergencies. This was a request made by Aaron Tupper, Emergency Management Coordinator.
So moved. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number thirteen, authorization for county judge to sign Texas Division of Emergency Management sub-grant award letter for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, project number DR four three three two dash oh five two. Project name is Hardin County Acquisitions. Total sub-grant amount is two million, three hundred sixty-five thousand, one hundred sixty-seven dollars. The local cost share amount is five hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents, which will be paid in kind by the property owners that are bought out. This will be for the buyout of twenty properties that have received severe repetitive loss, and they're not all located in one area of the county, it's throughout the county, in a cross-section.
So moved. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Pelt, and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion?
I had one question.
Commissioner.
What does it mean to be paid in kind by the property owners? How do they pay in kind?
This will be the same way that buyouts have been done in the past. I think the last time was in two thousand and nine, and it's kind of like, I think I mentioned to you previously, if a property's valued at a hundred thousand, the property owner's gonna agree to take a percentage of that. So whatever the total cost is to the county for the match on that property, the property owner's gonna take a less amount. These properties are all valued at pre-disaster, uh, property values, is that correct? And I think most of them will be glad to get that amount for them, and that's how that in kind works. If I'm explaining that right, Greg and Amanda? Okay.
So the in kind's not like they don't have to get out there and tear it down or anything?
No, sir, we'll do all that.
Okay.
And, uh, all of that adds into the, to the, uh, cost of the project.
Yeah.
So if it's valued at a hundred thousand, and it costs us, say, a hundred and twenty, uh, they're gonna, they're gonna, uh, receive twenty-five percent less of that total value.
Correct, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I didn't mean to steal your thunder, Greg, I know you was ready to talk about that, but since I knew, I thought I'd answer the question.
Yeah, that was, that was a fine explanation, uh, before it just didn't start on that project.
Thank you, we are too. Just to update everyone on, uh, buyouts and acquisitions, uh, we already received the FEMA twenty seventeen, the FMA seventeen. What's the total number of properties in that project?
Yeah, if I can speak to that, uh, there are twelve properties listed on the FMA twenty seventeen, uh, acquisition project. This one, uh, that was just accepted, uh, involves twenty properties. There is one other application under a different program, uh, that involves a, a number of properties that are to be determined, but it's likely to be about fifteen. So that will be a further discussion, I, but altogether, that's approximately forty-seven properties that will be involved.
Okay. Thank you.
Judge, I have one other question there. We're getting quite an inventory of these properties now. I wonder how many we got, we must, with this, if we complete this buyout, we must be up around fifty properties or something that we're having to manage, they can never be put back into use, is that right? These are like the other ones we have?
Yeah, uh, when it comes to, uh, the ultimate disposition of the properties, it somewhat depends on the program it was acquired under. For example, the FEMA grants do involve what's called an open space deed restriction on that property, which means that nothing can be built on it in the future. For the Community Development Block Grant Acquisition Program, there is the option to redevelop those properties in the future. So, uh, it's a little bit of a complicated, uh, formula when it comes to, uh, the total number of properties that will need to be, uh, maintained as open space. But, uh, I'll be happy to, uh, to provide additional outlines for that if you're quite interested.
But on this program here, these properties can be put back into use?
No.
Those are not.
These twenty cannot, and the FMA seventeen, those are buyouts also, correct?
Correct.
But the future grant that you say is coming up, those are, uh, the type that we could refurbish or whatever, gotta be done and resell those properties.
Yeah, because it's two things. One is the county has put in the management position of these properties.
Right.
And the second thing is, they're off the tax rolls.
Right.
So, you know, I, I don't, and this would be a federal situation, and, but it would make sense if you could take these properties and sell them with a stipulation that they had to be raised, or something like that, because, you know, we're starting to manage quite a few of them now.
If, if I could add an additional note about the ultimate disposition of these properties, uh, the, the county does have a memorandum of understanding with, uh, the cities of Lumberton and Sour Lake, uh, Rosalakers, that any properties that are required within those city limits are ultimately going to be deeded back to the cities, and the responsibility of maintenance would, uh, become theirs. So, that's, that's ended up, and additional complexity, uh, definitely encourage you, any, any further questions, let us know.
Do we know how many of these properties are located in the cities?
I, I could, I could give that one.
Be good, thank you. Out of the twenty, it's not that many.
Yeah.
But this is a voluntary program, and I think some of these are gonna tell us that they've already moved back in their homes, and are not interested in a buyout. We do have another alternate list of about twenty, and more of those are located inside municipalities.
So far, I've gone down the list of, of the twenties plus the eights, and twelve have confirmed that they're still interested in at least going through the process to see what the payout would be. And, uh, we have three on alternate lists that are still, um, interested, but we have about fifteen or so that have decided to, uh, they either sold the property, or they've rebuilt, or, or replaced it, or, or whatever. So, um, the list are, are the people that have, um, showed interest in it right after Harvey, but this is probably not going to be the accurate number for what we actually buy out.
And I just want to reiterate, this is totally voluntary. The property owner can decide they want to opt out. County can also decide that they want to opt out if they choose to do so for whatever reason. So if we have a difficult, um, property owner that we're dealing with, we can always choose to opt out of that and move on to the next best property. And I'm sure y'all will leave that up to me, right?
Yeah.
I figure. All right, any further discussion on item number thirteen? I'll move on to item number fourteen, consider adoption of resolution four dash twenty, authorizing submission of the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Funding Application to the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division. Question by Aaron Tupper, Emergency Management Coordinator.
So moved. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Roberts, segmented by Commissioner Pelt. And, uh, what's the total amount of that award, or that, uh, grant?
Now, I'm requesting forty, close to forty-five thousand.
Okay, and there's no match on that, correct?
There is no match.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
What does this grant go to?
Uh, the JAG is going to, uh, be for in-car complete for, you watch our body camera systems, uh, for the patrol cars.
Excellent.
Should get approximately six of them, including installs.
That's good.
So, we'll have about seven more left to get by Sunday.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number fifteen, consider adoption of resolution five dash twenty, authorizing submission of the State Homeland Security Program Funding Application to the Office of the Governor, Office of the Governor, Homeland Security Grant Division, also requested by Mr. Tupper. What's the total amount of this one?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, and this is for?
That one's gonna be for, uh, control access points, uh, at all your entrance doors and judges' doors. Basically replacing and adding to what we already have here. What we have here is antiquated, outdated, you can't find anymore, uh, and they're easy to hack, till you know it's true. What we're going to replace them with is a complete system, uh, that actually ties ID to the system already, and it's a RFID chip inside the ID. It's going to make it streamlined, uh, the system that, that we're looking at, and we'll be able to actually have two hundred and sixty-eight different access points. At some point, we could build them on JP offices, we could do them, and it's all controlled centrally in one location.
Aaron, is that system with the NX tied into this too?
Yes, sir. It is tied into this, uh, it's, it's the same type of system, it's just upgraded and, uh, not anyway. So what we're, what we're going with is brand-new, state-of-the-art technology compared to the old system which, uh, is on.
Even though it's only five years old, it's already antiquated. Anytime we have to buy a replacement part, he has to go look on eBay or somewhere, somewhere like that to find it.
Move to approve.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, segmented by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number sixteen, consider adoption of resolution six dash twenty, approving articles of incorporation for a local government corporation to engage in planning concerning disaster mitigation and other projects or programs to protect the residents of our community, infrastructure, industry, businesses, and housing against flooding, to design, develop, construct, operate, manage, repair, maintain, finance, equip, enlarge, extend, acquire, and improve integrated flood damage reduction systems, and to conduct any and all other related function or operation. That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, segmented by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? This is a, uh, due. This is a do-over of a resolution that we passed last year to support the creation of the Southeast Texas Flood Control District. I just wanna make sure that everybody understands that is not a drainage district for Harden County. This is a vehicle for us to be a part of a eight-county flood control district to apply for grants to work on flood control in the future. And it's not a drainage district for Harden County or any of the other counties that are associated with that program.
Because those would have to have over approved.
That's correct. Any other discussion on item sixteen? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seventeen, consider and possibly approve as a sponsor, articles of incorporation of the Southeast Texas Flood Control District, LGC, and appointing directors for that local government corporation. Motion by Commissioner Cooper, segmented by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eighteen, consider adoption of resolution seven dash twenty, recognizing March two thousand twenty of national, as National IDD Awareness Month. This is requested by Mr. Lane Fortenberry, Public Relations and Marketing Administrator, Spindel Top Center. Good morning, Mr. Fortenberry, how are you?
Second.
I'm good, how are you?
Doing good. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, segmented by Commissioner Kirkendall. Would you like to say anything regarding this resolution?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Harden County for their continued support of Spindel Top Center, all of our services and programs. IDD Awareness Month is a really important month. And this year, annually, for the last ten years, we've had an annual IDD Fun Day to where we have this day-long celebration of the abilities of these folks that we serve with an idol show, games, activities, food, things like that. And we also have an idol show, which all the programs sort of put together like a little song and dance routine and we have community members come in and judge and meet with these folks and everything like that. And this year is actually our tenth. So we're really, really excited about that and that's gonna happen on March twentieth. Another thing that we're doing is we're establishing a community garden in Port Arthur right down the street from Thomas Jefferson Middle School for our IDD program. And we're making it fully accessible to where they can go, they can learn how to plant, they can learn how to cook these vegetables and fruits and everything like that. And it's also gonna be open for the entire community, no matter they're in Port Arthur or wherever else, so we're really excited about that too. But then again, just thank you guys for all the support.
Thank you. I probably should know, but what does IDD stand for?
Oh absolutely, it's, oh thank you, it's, it stands for Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities. So things like autism, Down syndrome, things like that. And we actually have a service called our Early Childhood Intervention Program. And that helps folks who are zero to three years old kind of identifying a lot of these symptoms early. That way they can catch them and develop treatment plans and then transition to regular services.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fortenberry.
Absolutely, thank you guys.
All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We appreciate everything that Spindel Top does for the citizens of Harden County.
Absolutely, thank you guys.
Thank you. Item number nineteen, acceptance of the two thousand nineteen racial profiling report, or filing in the minutes of the court. This is gonna be for Constables Precinct two, four, and five, requested by Constable Hawthorne, Constable Jeffcoat, and Constable Summers. Have motion by Commissioner Cooper, segmented by Commissioner Kirkendall. This is a statutory requirement of all of the constables and sheriffs. We received the sheriff's last meeting and this takes care of three of the constables. We did have three constables that do not meet the statutory requirement.
So they're exempt from a judge?
These racial profiling reports mean they're exempt and we're supposed to file those in the minutes of the court, no later than March first of each year. Commissioner Cooper?
Adding to what the statement you just made Judge, and I've been out of it for going on ten years now. At one time, the statute said that if you filed your videos and for a certain number of years, you could do that in lieu of this racial profiling, is that no longer correct?
That, that's what, if you look, that's what these guys are doing, they're filing an exempt report, so they're exempt from filing a report, but they still have to file this with the minutes of the court and it's gotta be on record in the county clerk's office.
So even though they do use the video instead of a racial profiling report, they have to present this to the court?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
They don't do traffic stops, so they.
Right, yes, sir. Any other discussion on item number nineteen? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty, discussion and possible action regarding approval of updated equal employment opportunity affirmative action plan submitted by Debbie Mendesaville, Human Resources Director. What is the update on this, Ms. Mendesaville?
It is updated with the every-two-year draft updates plan. And it's for the year July one, twenty eighteen through June thirty, twenty nineteen.
So it's just a change of the dates?
Yes, and also we took out a new records pay scale since we moved.
Right, move to it. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, segmented by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-one, discussion and possible action to approve and accept replat of lot eleven, block D of Beaumont Colony South in the lots eleven A, eleven B, and eleven C. And a replat of lot eleven of Beaumont Colony North in the lots eleven A, eleven B, and eleven C. These are located in Precinct One. Mr. Cooper, have you had an opportunity to review those?
I have and the engineers have signed off on these and I've been in touch with Amanda on them and I would move that we accept this.
Have motion by Commissioner Cooper, segmented by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? Excuse me. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item twenty-two, consider request for approval for the Health Department to apply for an FDA retail cooperative agreement grant for a retail food regulation, regulator program that focuses on foodborne illnesses. No match required for this grant. That motion by Commissioner Cooper, segmented by Commissioner Kirkendall. And this is a request made by Sharon Whitley, the Health Director. Any other discussion?
Is this primarily for training?
No, this one won't be for training. This will actually be for us to do surveillance and we'll be able to capture the information included in the CDC, the CDC database.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirkendall. Any other discussion on twenty-two? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-three, consider and possibly authorize Harden County Health Department to enter into a contractual agreement with National Environmental Health Association and to receive funds in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars. This funding will support state and local health department food safety program initiatives related to environmental assessments and will allow the Health Department the opportunity to learn more about the National Environmental Assessment Report System. Also requested by Ms. Whitley. Have motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Discussion?
This grant will actually be used for the training.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item twenty-four, permission to purchase a two thousand nineteen Ford F seven fifty dump truck to be purchased utilizing a cooperative purchasing program and if approved, consider approval to transfer fifty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety dollars and twenty-four cents from zero one seven six two two three nine five RMB two contingency to zero one seven six two two five seventy, equipment purchase. This is a request by Commissioner Kirkendall. Have motion by Commissioner Cooper, segmented by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item twenty-five, permission to solicit bids for overlaying approximately seven hundred and forty feet on Thomas Road, six thousand six hundred and twenty-four feet on Biscamp Road, and two thousand nine hundred and forty-four feet on Oak Coons Road, all located in Precinct Two. Have motion by Commissioner Cooper, segmented by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number twenty-six, permission to auction an Ingersoll Rand compressor, serial number ending in two six four zero, utilizing Renee Bates Auctioneers at ReneeBates.com, requested by Commissioner Roberts. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, segmented by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item twenty-seven, permission to auction surplus election bags, approximately twenty-one of them, utilizing the Renee Bates Auctioneers at ReneeBates.com, requested by the purchasing agent, Misty Sims. Have motion by Commissioner Pelt, segmented by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Wish you'd get a lot for those, I miss it. Item twenty-eight, present results of bids submitted for overlaying approximately three-tenths of a mile on French Road, three-tenths of a mile on Roland Hills Drive, both located in Precinct Four and possibly awarded to the successful bidder. Ms. Sims?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Bids were opened on January thirty-third, two, twenty twenty at two PM in the Purchasing Department front office. Myself, Stacy Eckert, and Erica Singletary were present. We received two LD construction at two fifty a square yard and CMM construction at two forty a square yard.
Okay, we'll go with the low, low bid. Have motion by Commissioner Roberts to award the bid to CMM Construction at two forty a square yard and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item twenty-nine, present a result of bids submitted for Roden Bridge Materials and Emulsions for all Roden Bridge Departments and possibly awards to successful bidder, Ms. Sims. And if you don't mind, since this is kind of lengthy and it will be on file in the minutes of the court, if you'll just read off the low bidder for each item and then if any commissioner would like to award a number two on any of these items, please speak up a, as we go over each item and we'll award that at that time.
Roden Bridge Materials bids were opened on February thirteenth, twenty twenty at two PM in the Purchasing Department front office. Myself, Erica Singletary, and Stacy Eckert were present. The first one, I believe, was last time you all awarded Gulf Coast and Vulcan. Did any of you try that material from Vulcan and do you wanna do that again? I wasn't sure on this one.
I had a new seal code.
I have.
Okay. So Gulf Coast at the plant is sixty-five dollars a ton, delivered is seventy-three eighty a ton. And then Vulcan Materials has this LRA pre-coat material for twenty-three dollars a ton at the plant and delivered for eighty-seven ninety-two a ton.
So they did not build, bid the regular seal code aggregate, they bid this LRA pre-coat, which is something different?
I believe they say it's comparable.
No one's tried that yet?
Judge, my understanding is a lot of counties and contractors prefer the pre-coat.
Okay, do we wanna just award that the same way we did last time then?
Yes, sir.
Tell us again exactly what we did last time.
I believe we did Gulf Coast as number one and then number two Vulcan.
Is that the pleasure of the court to do the same this time?
Yes, sir.
Vulcan's got a very cheap price at the plant, the plant's near Uvalde. So I don't think we fix it in a truck to Uvalde.
We're not really, we're not really using it anyway.
Yeah, well I mean that kinda throws them out of the deal.
So do we not wanna do a number two, just awarded to Gulf Coast?
I think just awarded to Gulf Coast then.
Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
Alright, let's move on to the next item.
Next item is hot mix asphaltic concrete pavement. Vulcan Materials at the plant is sixty dollars a ton, LD Construction delivered at sixty-six dollars a ton. Hot mix cold laid asphaltic concrete pavement. Gulf Coast at the plant for seventy-five dollars a ton, delivered eighty-three a ton. Limestone baser equivalent road material. Vulcan Materials at the plant, twenty-three dollars a ton, delivered thirty dollars a ton. Slag coat products, we have no bid. Coverstone, Gulf Coast at the plant for forty-two thirty-five a ton, delivered for fifty dollars and thirty-five cents a ton.
Hang on just a minute, am I looking at the wrong thing? Hang on, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Grade four and three-eights washed tree gravel. Gulf Coast delivered for forty-six dollars a ton and Arcosa at the plant for thirty dollars a ton. Field dirt, we received no bid. Pine ridge sand, no bid. Rye base, Arcosa at the plant for thirteen dollars a ton, no delivery price. Bahama base, no bid. Rapid road repair, Gulf Coast eighty-eight seventy-five a ton at the plant and delivered ninety-three dollars a ton. One-inch washed limestone.
Hang on a second, go back to the rapid road repair? Uh, I think Chris and I both have used this from East Texas, is that right Chris?
It is.
It, it's a different, there's a difference in them actually.
I think East Texas is the super.
Yeah, they call it super high performance. The one from Gulf Coast is called high performance. I mean.
The material from East Texas is a lot better.
It is.
It's less oily and it, it doesn't get on the vehicles as much, is that what your experience is?
Yeah, it's, it's easier to use.
And so if the court could award the rapid road repair to Gulf Coast with the super high to East Texas and give us that option?
Yeah, I would agree with that. Can you restate that?
If we could award the rapid road repair to Gulf Coast and then the super high performance to East Texas asphalt, it really is a different grade.
So should we number Gulf Coast number one and then East Texas number two to allow you to use them when you need that for the?
They would actually both be number one Judge, depends on what product we want.
Yeah, cuz they're actually different.
But they're not listed as super road repair.
Right, it is. With the, the last time we tried to get some from Gulf Coast, they didn't have any. And that's why I went with Chris, the Vulcan, and really impressed. It worked really well. It's, it's, it's a little different. Hey, we need to do this Misty, since there's not a different heading for that type of.
If it's a different material, I think you can get it.
Yeah, you need different heading for it.
So we can bid it out as that material next time if you don't like.
Yes, but this time we'll make them a number two, which allows the commissioners to go there if they need to. Is that be correct?
Now, under the purchasing law, if we wanted the super high performance, even though we didn't bid it, could we still go to them? And I'm just asking because it, it really is a better product?
I think they didn't follow, technically they didn't follow the specs for rapid road repair, so it's gonna be a separate one that has not been bid out altogether, if I'm right.
I think you need to bet.
So I think you can get it from there. And if you want rapid road repair, you go to Gulf Coast. If you want the other one, you can get it from East Texas.
I think you probably need to bid the other one.
Can, can we just authorize her to go back out for one bid on that one product?
That's what I would think.
Just so we'll be clear. Alright, so under rapid road repair, that will only be awarded to Gulf Coast and and on the next agenda, you'll need to make a request to go out for bid for the super.
Super high performance.
And then we'll go back out for bid with that. Thank y'all. Yes, sir. One-inch washed limestone.
Thank you. Vulcan Materials at the plant, thirty dollars a ton, delivered thirty-seven dollars a ton. Crushed concrete, Gulf Coast at the plant, twenty dollars a ton, delivered twenty-seven fifty a ton. Concrete stabilized sand, Martin Marietta bid four sacks of cement per cubic yard. At the plant, forty dollars a ton and delivered forty-nine dollars a ton. OF, I'm sorry, OPF forty-two aggregate base, no bid. X seal, no bid.
Misty, did, on that stabilized sand, did we put specs on there?
We usually, and they usually bid and we usually asked for five, we do ask for five sacks per cubic yard.
Normally we ask for five sack.
And they had a notation on there that said, four sacks per ton exceeds cement content for five sacks per yard.
I'm just wondering, I see that they put an asterisk says, four sack per ton exceeds cement contact for five sack per yard, but how did we ask them to bid it? Did we ask them to bid it five sack per yard?
Yes, sir.
Then they didn't bid by the specs.
Yeah, I didn't really understand.
Did it, did Gulf Coast bid by the specs? I mean, I'm assuming since they didn't put any asterisks or anything, that they bid by the specs. Five sack per ton, five sack per yard.
Well, should we have asked them to bid it five sacks per ton instead of five sacks per yard?
No, common is five sacks per yard. Cubic yards, because that's what they trucks haul. And by tons, we have to do a lot of figure. I don't know, maybe it figures out the same.
It's one point one yard per ton, right? Isn't that that serious?
It depend on, in asphalt it's about point two-thirds. Depending on what the product is. But what I'm saying is, we send an eight-yard truck down to pick it up. And I guess, you know, they can weigh it and say it's some tons. But it gets back to what we asked them for and the way they weigh stabilized sands normally quoted is so many sacks per yard.
Yes, sir, we do ask for five sacks.
And we ask for five sack per yard.
So can we do a number one Gulf Coast and a number two for Martin Marietta?
That's what I suggest. And we probably need to put a statement in those that you have to bid by our specs.
Ready for emulsions?
Can I, can I, just reading this, it's, it's kinda going through my head. So what they're saying is a four sack per ton is gonna exceed the cement, the cement contact on a five sack per yard. Does it make any sense? I understand now why she, but when you read through it, you're actually getting a, you're getting, you're getting more concrete content in a per yard delivery.
Well, they say you are.
Yeah, they say you are, right.
It's not bidding by our specs and normally we send a truck down, we get it by. But it's not bidding by our specs, and normally we send a truck down, we get it by the yard.
Right. And so you would, you would be getting more per, per yard, more per yard than you would if it was five sack.
Possibly. But that still doesn't follow our specs.
Yeah.
I will call and clarify, and also we don't email, but you know what they, what they say.
Thank you.
Other materials?
Um, emulsions, they were also opened on February thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Did you, did you read off the other materials on those first?
Those aren't actually ones that we asked for, but they sometimes offer them as well.
No award needed there?
No, sir. I guess we didn't have any specs on them. They're just saying, you have this to, I think.
Thank you. So, yes, ma'am, emulsions?
Um, opened on February thirteenth, twenty twenty, at two P M in the purchasing department front office. Myself, Erica Singletary were present. Emulsified asphalt, SS one, CRS two, CRS two H. Cleveland asphalt, at the plant, one ninety-five a gallon, delivered two oh eight a gallon. Item B is asphalt item three hundred, AC ten. Martin asphalt at the plant, a dollar eighty-five a gallon, and delivered one ninety-seven a gallon. Road oil, MC eight hundred. Martin asphalt at the plant, two sixty a gallon, delivered two seventy-two a gallon. AES three hundred. Martin asphalt at the plant, two ten a gallon, delivered two twenty-two a gallon. Prime coat AEP. Cleveland asphalt, two fifteen at the plant, delivered two twenty-eight a gallon. And then tack oil, RC two fifty, item three hundred. Martin asphalt at the plant, two sixty, delivered two seventy-two.
Uh, I think I'm probably fixing to say what you are on item F, and probably need to go back to item B. Don't y'all usually like to try to keep your trucks out of Houston?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we don't go to Houston.
So on, uh, item, let's go back to B first. On item B, asphalt, item three hundred, AC ten?
But that's delivered. That would, they would be delivering.
There's none I would go to the plant, do we?
Yeah, we wouldn't have to go to their plant, they'd be delivering.
That's good, right.
None I would go to the plant.
So Commissioner Kirkendall, go ahead on item E.
Yeah, on, uh, on the tack oil, that, uh, for the plant, that we could, uh, award Cleveland asphalt and Shepherd, uh, as number one, and Martin is number two.
Which one is that, uh, Chris?
F, item F for, uh, tackle.
I'm sorry, I said anybody.
Cause we go get more tackle than we do anything else.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So number one will be Martin?
Would be Cleveland. And number two, Martin, would be just keep out of trucks out of Houston. Both delivered and planned, uh...
No, you go...
For the plant, plant.
You go delivered on...
Yeah.
All right.
Delivered on Martin.
Delivered on Martin.
And Cleveland for at the plant.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Misty.
That's okay. I'm trying to picture Martin.
Item G?
So F is gonna be Cleveland, number one at the plant, or just Cleveland at the plant, and Martin asphalt delivered.
And Martin delivered.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we're on G?
Yes, ma'am.
MC thirty. Martin asphalt at the plant, two seventy a gallon, and delivered two eighty-two a gallon. Do you want to do this same on that one?
Yes, please.
So you'll deliver, I mean, you will, uh, award to Cleveland at the plant. Right?
And Martin delivered.
And Martin delivered.
Yeah.
And then on track fuel oil?
We had no bid.
Can, uh, can I ask if we're going out for bid for that other one? Can we rebid this? Cause normally we have, uh... Yeah.
Rebid item H?
Please, cause I, I'd use that, and I've got some road that I wanna use.
All right.
So just put that on the March tenth agenda, so we can give you permission to go out for bid on those.
And I'll ask him what happened.
I should correct you.
Right, 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 correct.
Yeah, okay.
I move to make the awards as, uh, presented and discussed during the presentation made by the purchasing agent on Roden Bridge Materials and Emulsions. That motion by the chair, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Sims. Next one's yours, item thirty, permission to solicit proposals for demolition services related to the flood mitigation assistance program fiscal year two thousand seventeen, also known as FMA seventeen, and the Texas Division of Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for property acquisitions. That grant number is the one we discussed earlier, HMGP dash four three three two dash oh five two. And if approved, appoint a committee to make a recommendation to commissioners' court. This is the demolition services related to these property acquisitions on both of these grant programs. That motion by Commissioner Pell, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Do you have a committee to recommend, Ms. Sims?
Yes, sir.
Who are those names?
Commissioner Kirkendall, Judge Chrisina, and Officer Joe Brewer.
Commissioner Pell, you make that part of your motion to appoint those, uh, members to the committee?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cooper, you still second that motion?
Yes, yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And thank y'all for agreeing to serve on the committee. I know y'all have been getting some, uh, questions about your, uh, serving on these committees, and you're still agreeing to serve on them, and I appreciate that. Item thirty-one, discussion only of any item not on the agenda without taking any action. I just have one item, and that's to remind everybody that we have a public hearing on March the tenth at nine thirty A M. That's regarding the pace program. And then our regular meeting is at ten o'clock after that. Does any of the commissioners have anything they'd like to discuss, items that are not on the agenda?
It's at nine o'clock, Mr.
Nine thirty. Yes, sir, on, uh, March the tenth. That is right, isn't it?
This really weird phenomenon outside called sunshine is here. Thank God for sunshine.
Yes, sir. Mr. Roberts? Mr. Cooper? I think Ms., uh, Beckton had something she wanted to report to us about elections.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to let y'all know that, uh, we've had two thousand three hundred and three early voters.
Pretty good. Uh, early voting continues the rest of this week until six P M. Friday at the branch location, five P M Friday here at the courthouse. And we have, uh, three branch locations that are open at Lumberton, Sour Lake, and Sillsby. And then, of course, the main early voting location is here in the county courtroom at the courthouse. Anybody in the gallery have anything they'd like to say?
I'd like to ask.
Commissioner Roberts?
What's the breakdown on the...
I don't have a breakdown, but you could check in the office, the list, and give it to you pretty fast.
Move adjourned.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Pell to adjourn...